December 3rd, council work session to order. Would everybody please stand to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Gill, anyone do roll call, please?
Okay. Mr. Gerard. Mr. Ricchio.
Here.
Mr. Devine.
Here.
Mr. Pezzin.
Here.
Ms. Cullen.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Cotroci.
Present.
Mr. De Giuseppe.
Do I know that this meeting's at 6:00?
Uh, yes.
I don't think he's here.
He's on vacation.
He's on vacation.
Have somebody call him right now. I thought he was back in town. Alright, so, the reason I wanted to start early because I'm trying to do this as fair as possible. Just to give you a little sure everybody knows what's going on, but the people at home may not know what's going on. We're here to make a decision on the allocations of the fire companies. I went to a fire board meeting with the mayor, trying to get this resolved, and I was, I thought, you know, the longer we kept talking and the longer we kept doing things, maybe there was a way to work this, this whole thing out. Until I got an email from, uh, the president or whatever he is, Reed, from
Chief.
Chief from Hareman, stating that there may be other council people that we were supposed to meet on the 20th, if I'm not mistaken, in November. There may be other council people that would like to ask some questions. The mayor invited, he said if there's somebody that you want to have there, please let the manager know, we'll invite them to the meeting on the 20th. The email that came back said, uh, he wanted that, that Mr. Devine could attend that meeting. And then I started thinking about it, and I said to the mayor, well, if Mr. Devine's going to be there, then, you know, Mr. Ricchio may want to be there, Mr. Pezzin may want to be there, let's just do it in a public meeting. So, and try, you know, trying to make this work the way I wanted it to, it didn't work that way. So if everybody wants to know why we're here tonight, it's a result of that email that was sent. So that's why we decided to go this route. So what I think we're going to do is have each company, whether you want to go to the podium, whether you want to sit at the chair, go up and explain your situation. Why do you think this should be five? Why do you think it should be four? And look, we know there's three companies that are going to say it should be four, and there's one company that's going to say, or two companies saying there's five. Council's going to see through all that. I think we need to hear some facts and, and things. So we're going to give you the opportunity. I don't think we're, you need more than 10 or 15 minutes, if not, it's just going to get boring. But I will go back to you and give you more time if you need that. So what I like to do is have either the chief or the president of each company speak. So we'll go through that first. Then we'll have council ask questions. Then we'll go to the public. If anybody in the public wants to speak on anything, we'll give you time. And then we'll come back, and then we're going to call recess, and then we're going to come back, and we're going to vote on this decision. So I'm going to open the meeting. The mayor wants to make a statement tonight, so I'll open the meeting with the mayor's statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Grab a little packet for each of the council.
Is that the one I got already?
No.
Okay.
It's quiet. This council chamber has been a long time. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. This is something that initiated, has been going on, I think, for too long. I had hoped that my first term as mayor, we would have corrected the problem. I think we're moving in that direction from the 2005 survey. Actually, had all the companies talking about what was the right thing to do. I'm going to read a letter that I sent to the council and the council president. "The current five-company allocation is not equal or fair, nor is an efficient utilization of our tax dollars. I'm proposing a funding change to four companies instead of five companies. Each fire company will receive 25 percent of the fire tax funding allocation, which starting in 2019 would be for four stations, to include station 50, 51, 52, and 53. This change will result in four companies receiving equal fundings and eliminate the funding imbalance for 2019 and going forward. In the current ordinance, there are no stipulations on how to allocate these tax dollars to the individual fire companies. Council has simply divided the number of companies into the total tax dollars and given equal share to each. At the May 28, 2019 Borough Fire Board meeting, discussion with the fire chiefs and the presidents of the four fire companies, Mayor Saxton and council president, De Giuseppe, met, and at the end of the discussion, it was agreed upon by the four companies that the current five-way split would be given to four companies, and the fifth allocation would be held, till either the companies come up to, come up with an agreement, or it would come to council, or it would come to council for a vote. On June 11, 2019, all four companies were notified that their checks were available to be picked up, and the fifth check would be held. In closing, I'd thank the Borough Council for reviewing this proposal. Also, too, in the packet that I gave them, are letters that I received from Station 50, Station 51, and Station 52, stating what their feelings were about the split. Also, too, I included the average staffing per response from 2014 to 2018 for the four companies, and the total number of calls, and the average for the companies. I hope that information will help you in your decision tonight. I am available for, for questions. This is not something new. This has come up for vote, this will probably be the fourth time that I can remember. Hopefully, this will be the last time. All of us have agreed that we all have challenges, whether it be financial challenges, whether it be getting people out on fire calls. We know that there's a reduction, there's a challenge in retention of, of members, and enticing new members to join. It's not entirely all our fault with the total number of hours to be trained as a volunteer fireman. It takes a lot more of a commit, commitment than a lot of us had to put in, in this day and age when people are holding two jobs, and young people are not committed to volunteering, whether it's for fire companies who are just normally volunteering. So we're all up against it. I think that moving forward with this, this will go a long way in helping us to work together a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm a little confused on, I usually go to the fire chief, but I don't know how to deal with this tonight because
Station, why don't you start with the stations?
But I'm saying, you are, I don't know if you're making a statement as the chief, or are you going to speak on behalf of your company, or how, how do you want to handle this?
Well, I agree with the mayor as to let the company
Let the company speak, so you're not
Representatives speak first.
But are you speaking on your
I, I, no, I'm not speaking for my fire company.
The deputy chief is speaking.
Okay. Alright, so, let's, does anybody else have any handling this? Is council okay with this?
Yes.
Good.
Alright, so, let's start with the lowest number, which is 50. Well, really, 25. Is there somebody here from Station 25? You want to speak?
I'm from both companies.
So you're speaking on 50, 50?
53, 25.
53 and 25, so you're the president for both.
Yes, I am.
Okay. Is there a chief for both?
Yes.
One chief or two chiefs?
One chief.
Okay. Alright, so who wants to speak?
Dave.
Okay. Dave, go to the podium, state your name and position and all for the, for the record.
Can I meet with Captain?
Pardon me?
Would that be okay?
Yes. You did an outstanding job on the parade.
Oh, thank you. We certainly could use more help with special partner law attendance.
Can I keep you there?
Yeah, no, you gave me the right
Really? People are so
People are so
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you, Donna.
Alright, so Dave, we'll try to limit this to about 10 minutes. If you need a little bit more time, I mean, we'll max out at 15. Is that fair?
Okay. I'll try, try to keep it as short as possible.
So we're starting at 616.
My name is David Albright, resident of East Ward Bristol Borough. I'm a life member of America Hose Hook and Ladder Company Number Two, past deputy chief of Bristol Fire, Bristol Borough Fire Department, Chief 502, past chief of America Hose Hook and Ladder Company Number Two, current president of both America Hose Hook and Ladder Company Number Two and Bristol Volunteer Fire Company Number Six. Twenty-four years ago in 1995, America Hose Hook and Ladder Company Number Two was located in their current station on Fairgood Avenue, and Bristol Volunteer Fire Company Number Six was located around a corner on Hay Street. During this time period, some members started talking about the issue of the time, rising cost of firefighting due to equipment year, insurance, building maintenance, et cetera. Also discussed was the lack of incoming membership, the aging firefighters, fundraising, and the cost, especially maintaining two fire stations, when one fire station would fit all equipment for both fire companies. It was decided that moving in together was at the best interest of both fire companies, not just for membership, but for financial reasons also. As a result of this decision, we made to move the two fire companies into one station. Considering they were located so close to each other anyway, Bristol Volunteer Fire Company Number Six moved into America Hose Hook and Ladder Company Number Two, building located at 2401 East Fairgood Avenue. Once the paperwork was completed in 1996, America Hose Hook and Ladder Company Number Two and Bristol Volunteer Fire Company Number Six remained separate fire companies. Each company, their own equipment costs, businesses, and finances separate. Financially, they only shared building maintenance and utility costs. In the past interest of Bristol Borough's fire service, members from each company trained on each other's equipment, and learned to drive each other's truck. This guaranteed that trucks would get out when called, which again, was at the best interest of Bristol's residents. The combining of our efforts, instead of competing against each other, helped each of our fire company grow to where they are today. Since the loss of income from closing each company's bingo and having to find other ways to support ourselves, both companies have remained up to date with training and equipment. I understand that other fire companies are also struggling and trying to maintain membership, making it harder to raise funds to survive. People no longer have time to volunteer due to working more hours, family demands, moving away, and just life happening. But in 1996, America Hose Hook and Ladder Company Number Two, Bristol Volunteer Fire Company Number Six, tried to prepare for the future, which is now. The mayor and chief Slack are currently responsible for Bristol Borough's fire service. In the current situation of Bristol's fire departments, these men should be working to bring all companies together in a combined firehouse, meaning all companies to become up with a three, four, or five-year plan to combine all companies. We are all competing for the same thing, membership and money. How much better would things would be if we could all come together? Instead, Mayor Sax and chief Slack are encouraging the council to change the fire service allotment's distribution from five current fire companies to four fire companies or four fire stations, deciding that Bristol Volunteer Fire Companies should no longer receive their 2019 allotment for, of 28,600, which has already been distributed to the other fire companies. The decision is not based on the fire service study that the borough has included in the past. The result of the study, which has been done numerous times in Bristol Borough, has, has too many fire companies and too much equipment. Instead, the mayor and chief are making an unethical decision and will benefit both of the fire companies by permanently removing the allotment of Bristol Six and increasing the allotment for the remaining fire companies by $7,150 for 2019 and every year thereafter. Five years ago, in 2014, Bristol Volunteer Fire Company Number Six made a decision to purchase a new engine rescue truck. This truck is a combination piece, replacing two older trucks. The financial decision to purchase this truck was based on their income at the time, their anticipated income, and was evaluated and approved by the financial advisors. At that time, they had no reason to believe that the fire service allotment that they are entitled to from Bristol Borough would be discontinued for their fire company. The removal of this fund now will seriously jeopardize payment of their current debts and the payments still due on this truck. If Bristol Number Six is unable to pay for this truck, and it has to be sold, the Hareman section of, of town will be without a fire engine, which is used to put out grass fires, cars fires, building fires, et cetera, and the fire service on that, that end of town also will be out, without rescue tools and equipment used on auto accidents and other rescue services. It is widely believed that the other Borough Fire Companies, that America Hose Hook and Ladder Company Number Two and Bristol Volunteer Fire Company Number Six are one fire company, not two. That's stated many times before in the past 24 years. They are two separate fire companies. Each file federal and state income tax, using individual tax ID numbers. They also file fire reports to PA using their separate FDID numbers. They truly are, they truly only combine their efforts to save on building expenses. Although they work out of one station, they both have their own financial obligations, not only individually, but to each other. In May of 2019, there was a meeting for all Bristol Fire Chiefs, presidents, Mayor Saxton, chief Slack, council president Ralph De Giuseppe. The topic of discussion was the distribution of the 2019 fire service allotment. With the mayor stated he and chief Slack were not in favor of giving Bristol Volunteer Fire Company Number Six their annual allotment, because they believed that Bristol Number Six and America Hose Hook and Ladder Company Number Two are one fire company, not two, implying that 24 years, these companies have lied and received funds that they were not entitled to. When they argued that we were two separate fire companies, Mayor Sax stated, in a threatening way, that the borough could close, should choose to recognize whatever fire company they wanted, clearly indicating the borough would vote to no longer recognize one or both of the fire companies located at 2401 East Fairgood Avenue. At this time, I asked council to consider, continue to recognize Bristol Volunteer Fire Company Number Six as a borough fire company with 19 current members, and not to follow the unethical recommendations of chief Slack and the mayor, so their fire companies can benefit from the removal of the fire service allotment from Bristol Fire Company Number As the chief, after the chief's meeting, I called a meeting of our executive board and our financial advisors to discuss the future of both fire companies. As of today, America Hose Hook and Ladder Company Number Two has already received its share of the allotment for 2019, so it is believed that Bristol Volunteer Fire Company Number Six is in danger of being unrecognized as a volunteer fire company in Bristol Borough, rooting out any further allotment payments. In 75 years of volunteer fire service provided by the men and women of Bristol, who sacrificed their personal and family time to provide fire protection to Bristol Borough residents, with this threat of losing our status and our allotment, financial advisors have informed us that we, Bristol Volunteer Fire Company Number Six, needs four years to make adjustments to our budget for the fire companies to be able to survive. If Bristol Six is in jeopardy of losing their fire service allotment, I asked council at this time to consider paying us our full allotment due for 2019, then make quarterly deductions each year for the following four years, until the allotment of Bristol Fire Company Six is phased out. This would give us the time to make necessary arrangements to pay our debt, and hopefully not jeopardize losing the fire truck that services Hareman and Bristol Borough residents. Just one, just something in closing. Who's going to be next? We can debate this tall till the cows come home. Taking Bristol Six's allotment is not the answer. Bristol Six and Bristol, and America Two did the right thing.
Call whatever you want to call it.
It was a smart move on our part. This end, this end of town could and should do the same thing. We are dying a slow death. The time to act is now. Thank you.
Dave, stay there. Okay, so, first of all, I could, I know how emotional, how hard this is. I could just, I know you a long time, and I know how hard and difficult it is for you to do this presentation, but I want to make sure before you sit down, if council has any questions for you?
Yeah, one, one other thing I want to clear up before I, we go too far here. The email that was, was back and forth from Chief Reed, we know Tony had questions, but it was opened up to all council, that if they wanted to come to that meeting, it wasn't just directed for Tony to be there. It was open for everybody.
And I, and that's why I said, when Chris sent that email
Okay.
I said, well, I mean, I know Tony had questions, that maybe other people have questions. I was trying to handle it with, and then go back, and I was going to meet with you, correct? And that never took place, so I just figured, you know what?
We tried to work it out, civilly.
So, Tony, you had your hand up.
Yeah, well, the first thing I want to say is, actually to Ralph, I'm glad that Ralph decided to open it up to all the council members and not just, you know, a few. I said that was a great job on, on his part. That way, everybody has a say. The second thing is, I, I want to apologize. I feel bad that you even had to come up here and plead, you know, for, to get your allotment when it comes to volunteer firefighters. I mean, you guys risked your lives, your, your family time, your, all those things to volunteer. You know what I mean? So you guys are all on the same page, and, you know, you guys are all a brotherhood, whether you, you realize it or not. But to me, it's very simple. Unless somebody from another fire company's going to come up here and blow my socks off about, you know, information that I'm not aware of, to me, I, I like to base everything on kind of common sense, things that are, are simple, right? And, and there's a simple premise that I'm going to make my decision on about this allocation. And the first one, there's two parts to it. Does it save taxpayers any money? And the answer is no. Does it make our residents safer? The answer is no. So those two things are answered no. There's no reason for me to even go any further. And then, on top of that, all of you guys are bleeding volunteers, you know? Everyone's struggling to get, you know, firefighters. And the end of the day, until somebody comes up with a comprehensive plan, whether it be the mayor or the fire chief, where you're going to shrink it down to two, you're going to have one at one end of town and a fire company at the other end of town, until you do that, right now, it doesn't make any sense. It's like stabbing your brother in the back and watching him bleed out. That's what's happening. That's the way I see it. I look at things as pictures. And it's just like, you guys are, or those guys not getting an allotment is not going to do anything for the safety for me, my family, or anybody else's family. So, I mean, that's, basically, I didn't really have any questions, except those statements, that's how I feel about it. Unless somebody from one of the other companies is going to knock my socks off, but I have an open mind if there's something there that I, I'm not kind of registering. That's all I have.
Frank.
First of all, I can't disagree with anything Tony said about volunteerism, and, and, you know, it is frustrating, I think, annually to see you guys beat each other up, to be perfectly honest, because you guys all do so many things that we can't appreciate more, and the borough residents can't appreciate more. You are volunteers, and, you know, we don't like to see this annually, and perhaps that's why we also, you know, kind of kick the can down the road sometimes, because we, we don't like to see this every time, and then we want to try to find an equitable solution, and maybe we haven't found that yet. That said, I am going to still just kind of ask questions and, and understand this thing a little bit more as we discuss, so, I guess my, my one, I appreciate your presentation, by the way, it was very well done, and as Ralph said, obviously, this means a lot to you, and we appreciate that. How many active firefighters are there out of the, the station house itself, between the two companies?
Between the two companies?
We have a list.
You have, you have a list?
Yeah, I was just saying, do you know a number off the top of your
Active?
Active as in fighting fires, yeah.
Maybe 12, 15 out of, from one, and maybe the same from the other.
Okay. And, so you were saying that the biggest burden financially is the, the truck itself, right?
Correct.
That fights the fires.
That's correct.
And, you know, that is obviously a huge concern for me. It should be a concern for all the borough residents, but needless to say, Lorraine and I represent Hareman, and that is, you know, where we would anticipate the truck would come from if there was ever any sort of crisis in Hareman. So I'm just trying to understand it better. I'm going to be listening to everything everyone has to say, and I do appreciate everything that you guys have done, and thank you.
Lorraine, you have anything, or?
Well, I'd like to say thank you to each and every one of you. It means a lot to have so many, look at these people, there's a lot of people here that are taking care of our town. I have, I have a question for you. When, you just said there's 12 and 12 active. I'm going to be honest with you. People were looking at me and going, he's, like, in other words, you're not telling the truth.
Okay.
So I want you to, to tell me, you know?
My, my best guess is, it's probably 12 and 12.
Okay.
12 and 15, I'm, you know?
You're saying 12
Off the top of my head.
People are fighting fires in each department?
Between life members and active members, yes.
24 people, if the fire whistle blew tonight, they could
Well, not, maybe not all one time.
No, I know that. I'm, I'm not saying there's 20.
That's it, yes.
And this proposal that you have here, that you say for the next four years, I think it is, this, to get the allotment this year?
Correct.
And then for the next four years to take a deduction? And then what would happen? Would your fire truck be paid off?
No, we would, we would make other arrangements to, find financing for that truck.
You would?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we would have to, or it would have to be sold.
Okay. And whoever said I wasn't coming tonight, I want to tell you, I was coming here, no matter what. So just to let you know, people make stuff up, because they like to start trouble.
Well, the, the fire storm has started, so.
Okay.
Right. Mr. Ricchio.
Yeah, a couple things. I'm just kind of, I don't know, hurt, disappointed, you know, that the, you know, that the, the effort is going towards, you know, taking money from one, from another fire company. You know, I, you know, the, the, the fire services, the volunteerism is, is down. It's been going down since the 70s. We're at, we're less than a tenth of what we were back in, in the 70s, volunteers. You know, it's, I, I don't know, just, you know, this being put on council to decide this, it's not easy. But, you know, I'm just kind of disappointed in the way, you know, that things are going, and I, I think we should, you know, as council, at some point in time, we should, you know, as I said before, we should either force it to go to one department or two departments, ideally, probably one department. You know, that's my opinion. Just like they did out in Morrisville, who has a demographics, the same as ours, pretty much. They're down to one fire station. You know, it, you know, you know, if, if a firehouse, if these guys get hurt and they close, I don't want you to have the mindset that these members will just go and go over to another firehouse. It doesn't happen that way. So, so if they, if they, if they, if they end up closing their doors for some, I'm not saying that, that's the case, but if it does, you know, you got the lost equipment, and these guys just don't, it's, it's not that they could just go and, it, they're going to go and go over, over to another firehouse and, in the borough. It doesn't work that way. So then you end up having fewer, less volunteers in, in the department as a whole. It's just, I'm just, saddened that, you know, that we're at this, that we're at this point, you know, that the efforts are going in towards, you know, instead of trying to to, you know, make the firehouse, fire department of the borough stronger, you know, that we're ripping it apart, but, you know?
Well, I think, you know, we relied on some of your decisions as a councilman and I think one of your statements that you made, there should be four companies now five publicly up here. I, I mean, I could be.
I, I think, I think we should have one or two.
Well, I think when we talked about allocations, you had made a statement one night on the floor that you agreed that it should be four and not five. But I, you know, I'm not going to go look for videos and things like that, but I'm only going by what I think you said. Is that it, Tony?
That's it. Just, just, I, I agree with you.
Dave, we're going to give you a rebuttal at the end of this.
Okay.
Because it's not fair that you spoke first and everybody's going to speak and then you don't get another opportunity. But, we're way over the time limit, but Louis, you have anything?
Sorry. Okay. I echo everyone's opinion here. We're definitely for firefighters with volunteerism, but I know, you know, it's getting harder and harder to get volunteers and that's why I think we're.
Yes, it is.
We're forced into this issue and no matter, we're not going to make everybody happy. But I think a decision has to be made. We have to get this thing, you know, moving on. We do have a study along with the township that's supposed to come out in a few months and we'll shed some more information on the outside view of this thing. Do you know, and, and do you know what the debt is on the truck? How much is it on the truck?
Offhand, no. What, matter? I, I don't know, offhand.
I, I was just wondering, you know?
Believe about eight payments?
Four eighty-three.
Four eighty-three.
Thousand dollars?
That's correct.
Okay. And there's additional debt, a debt also with that station?
Yes, equipment and upkeep.
But that's a major, I guess that's a major.
Station and the roof. Just typical, you know, maintenance to the building.
Okay. Well, that would be the combined effort.
Combined effort, correct.
Okay. That's.
And that's why we did it.
That's my only question. I, I think eventually, when that report comes back, I'd like to see what the debts, what debts are out there for all the companies and what their budgets are and their projections for the, the future because this is.
Yeah, this isn't the first that.
This isn't an easy decision and it's been kind of sidetracked for a long time and I think, I said it once before, it's never easy to raise taxes or go against firemen. And, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's really a big group in our town, but even the firemen don't agree with this, so, so we're in a, we're, we're in a quandary. But I appreciate your, your report and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But Tony Devine said, I mean, I'm sorry, Tony Ricchio said, this isn't easy, that's true. I think we've been here so many times with the same issues and then it kind, kind of looks like we're the bad guys because you're saying make a decision. But you got to understand too, the way things are going in America, things are closing down and they're becoming smaller. It's not that we don't think, we, we admire all of you volunteers. It takes a lot to be a volunteer and do what you do. I couldn't do it, you know, and my life could depend on one of you one day. But the problem is that what do we do? We have you guys, the two, and then we have the three. We would love it if one day, everybody could work together, but we know that's not happening in here, okay? And that's not our fault. That's because that's what you guys choose to do. So, you know, that I understand. What Tony Devine said is true too. It's not about taxpayers, it's not, we're taking, we're not taking anything away from the taxpayer, but we're trying to do the right thing. And what is the right thing? How do we know what's the right thing? We only know, like today, okay, so we get these reports, but I just got this report from you and, I mean, yeah, thank God you read it, but how, how quickly are we able to look through it? Something has to come to an end, unfortunately, and it might not be something you all like, but we're trying to do the best for the town. One day, I would just love it to be just two companies, but we'll see what happens.
All right, so, Tony, you got a lot more because?
No, no, just, I just want to make a statement. Everyone is in here, everyone's talking about how difficult and how hard of a decision is. To me, it's a simple decision. I don't think it's hard at all, it's simple. Do the taxpayers save any money? No. Does, do our residents, are they going to become safer by taking money out of one and splitting up amongst another four? The answer is no, simple. Until you guys are ready, and I know people don't like to hear it, until you guys are ready to downsize to two or one, there's no use even having these meetings. There's, they shouldn't be asking or begging for an allocation. They shouldn't be doing it. They shouldn't have to.
All right. You already made that point.
I understand, but I just want to make sure that it's understood.
We understand it. We want to move this along.
That is moving along.
All right, so I'm not even going to ask the question. I'll hold my questions till I hear everybody speak. All right? So, let's go to number, this is fifty next.
I'm M. McHugh, I'm president of station fifty and I'm from, I guess, the northward in town. I'm not here, I'm not going to say nothing negative about the other stations. Council, it's your job to provide fire protection for the town. The only really solution is one station. Unless you keep pushing that agenda, it's not going to happen. Look around this room and look how many gray-haired people you see here. In ten years, are they going to be fighting fires? No. What we're doing, we're turning fire companies against each other and that's not right. But in Bristol, that's the history of Bristol, is turning the fire companies against each other. Am I right, ma'am?
You're.
Huh? Yeah, they've been doing it since nineteen twenty-seven, you know? And there's a time, I think, council has to tell all the companies, they have to sit down and they have to come up with a solution. Not ask, tell, because I think they really want to do it. Because I talk to individuals here and I think they all see the writing on the wall. They're not getting volunteers anymore and if they do get a volunteer, if he's here for a year, they're lucky. So, and I, and I think they've been doing some different surveys in it. I think the average age, I think of fifty-one's are active members, the top ten active members is in the fifties. So, ten years from now, we're going to be, they're not going to be here anymore and aren't they going to have that people to come up? And even the facilities in town, the fire stations in town, fifty-one's lives in an old building which I think probably needs renovations and that, like that. You need one central location for a fire station in town. And also on the apparatus. You, you talk about trying to be right with the, the taxpayers' money, but really what you're doing now, you're opening that window, you're throwing money out the window because you can't tell them how to spend their money.
Say this again, I'm sorry.
With, with the taxpayers' money. You give taxpayers' money to every company. You have no control over that once you hand it out. So, they can go buy whatever they want, even if they don't need it. So, you have a survey coming up, more likely in the survey, it's going to reduce the apparatus in town. You're talking about, I guess, in one company, they don't have over a million dollars worth of apparatus. Is that really feasible? Do they, and there's a duplication of equipment in town. We don't need that either. We need to be efficient firefighting operation. And I think if you move together in one station, you're going to have a nicer facility, maybe you can draw some more young people inside. Maybe now you, you have to pick what station I want to belong to. It's ridiculous. So, like I said, I'm from fifties and we're, we're for whatever moves forward for the fire company. My company was established in nineteen twenty-seven as the only fire company in this town. This building was built for the company that I belonged to. And next year, our lease runs out and there is an opportunity that we're going to lose our lease and we're going to throw it out of our own building that was built for us.
Why would anybody?
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I know you're not, but I'm just saying, that's how, that's how things work.
Because that'll be tonight's Facebook page, we're throwing it.
That it too, because it was already on Facebook, there were signs on Facebook that fifty-three's is going to close if they don't get the money. That's not going to happen. It's just people throwing crap out there to, just throw crap out there. So, but as, like I said, with, with fifties, there was an experiment done in nineteen twenty-seven that only had one fire company in town. All the other fire companies were closed and that's when the war started because it was forced to happen. I think you're at a point right now where I think everyone's open for that. They want that, but they need a nudge and it's up to you to nudge them. And I understand what Tony's, what he's saying, it ain't going to cost the taxpayers this, this, it's true. But would you rather have the taxpayer money gone for one bill in one building or pay for oil bills? Is it feasible? No, it's not feasible. So, if you want to get the best money for your buck, do that. And I think there is, there, I know there was grants out there before for building fire stations. I think because Pennsylvania was pushing that and I think the borough should jump on that. Like I said, I'm not saying nothing negative about them.
All right, so.
But as, as a member of fifties though, we are four to four-way split.
I, I, that's what I'm trying to get to. I, I listened to a lot of things while you talked.
Yeah.
Or, you know, I, I don't want, I don't want to play this, you know, you need to make a decision, but your company's here.
We're four to four.
You're asking for a four-way split.
Yeah.
And for what reason? Just give me some reason why, like Dave gave us a reason why we shouldn't go to four.
I still think that, you know, there could be two companies operating out of there, but they're operating out of one.
Look, let me just back this up. We know there's a survey being done.
Yeah.
Should be finished in what, six months, mayor?
Four to six.
Four to six months. We don't know what that survey's going to say, but we're ninety-nine percent sure we don't need five or four fire companies.
And if I was a bet man, I would.
But that doesn't mean that this group, we're going to be sitting here arguing, which two are we going to keep or is there going to be three in one and?
No.
Two in the other. So, that's another thing that we need to deal with after the survey. We're here tonight because this company needs to know about their allocation that's sitting in escrow.
Yeah.
And we want to end this before the end of the year. So, I'm just, what I would like you to say is give us a reason why it should go to four.
Well, I still believe they, they said they're running out of ones, to me, they run out of one station. You're getting the same services as each other in these stations. They already made the comment to you, they, they have one president, they have one chief, but they just have two names. So, how's that different than anybody else? And I said, I, I don't want to up here negative about them, but they do, they run the same model.
Look, I ain't asking you to talk about it anyway, I'm asking you to.
I'm, I'm just telling you why.
Right, okay.
They have one chief, they have one president.
Okay.
They have two names.
All right.
They have one building.
All right, so.
Is there anything more? I mean, it's, I mean, it's pretty clear.
Let me go to Mr. Ricchio first. Tony, you have any questions?
No.
Louis?
No. No, I mean, I agree with you.
Greg?
I agree with you saying.
No, thank you, Lorraine.
I thought you said, Tony, I was talking.
Have any questions?
I just wanted to make a statement, you got to.
We don't need statements.
No, no, I, I like to make a statement.
Five more companies.
That's all right, it's not going to take that long.
One other, one other thing, on the active members, right? Where they, you know, they said people rolled their eyes. Well, each, each company makes their own standard of who's an active member. So, their standards may be different from another company. So, if they're saying that, they're telling you the truth. It's according to their company, they're, you know, they're active. But another, another company may have, you may have to make twenty-five percent of calls, this, this, and this to be active. So, you may get different totals.
I see what you're saying.
All right?
Well, what I was saying, Ed, was it wasn't a question, it was just a comment, that I agree with you that we should go down to one.
I didn't knock your shoes off then, did I?
No, not yet, no.
Kind of things, I don't want to.
But to bring it down to one and I, and I agree with you, we, if this is the count, we got to make the decision. It sounds like you're on board with bringing it down, everyone is kind of seeing the writing on the wall. I think that this council needs to make, like we said before, it doesn't make sense just to cut ones out right now until there's a comprehensive plan to do it the right way.
But the, the borough is the most surveyed fire company, I believe, in the state of Pennsylvania. It really doesn't matter if you have surveys and you don't.
I, I agree with you, I don't think surveys matter, we got to make a decision.
Yeah, but they had surveys going back to what, um, late, the late seven, early seventies when Warren Kimball did the survey. You know, Grundy Foundation paid for it and some of the things they, you know, accomplished, but unless you do what the survey says, why do it?
Here's why, ready? Because if you use common sense, you don't need surveys. The writing's on the wall, what needs to be done.
Well, well, no.
The only thing the survey is for is to, what, slow the process down.
No, well, sometimes you need somebody else from the outside to come in and look at your operation too and tell you. Sometimes you get blinded by what you're doing.
Thank you.
All right?
You're not done, Ed.
Debbie, you can't leave me.
Not done, we got a few more people, so stay at the podium. The mayor wants to respond to something and then I got Greg, Lorraine and Betty.
No, I, I, I'm good.
You're okay? Lorraine, you good?
No, let me.
Go ahead.
I just, I want to know what, what, do you have any ideas about combining and going to, would you work in one building with all these people?
Our company already said they would work in one building.
What's that?
Our company already said they would work in one building.
And you'd work with all these people?
Yeah.
And you would have no problem?
I have no problem.
Okay, thank you.
I talked to Dave the other night at Wawa about it.
Thank you, thank you. Let's get it going, Mr. Mayor, one company.
Well, it's funny that you say something like that because as Ed has stated, you know, we've tried to get to this point thirty, forty years. Bob, for fifty-five years, is a volunteer fireman. I get it, I understand it. But the whole point is, this is a first step, changing this allocation into moving in that direction of combining everybody. Because the council took the initiative to do this new survey, currently, three of the companies are already talking about just what you're talking about, Tony, about combining and being one company. No disrespect to station fifty-three, but it goes back to me where we said, get back to Ralph, get back to me, what are you going to do? You support the five or you support the four? Nobody got back. These other three companies took it upon themselves to start talking about how do we get together and work? So, we're moving in that direction. And, and just a, a quick comment on where you say that nobody's getting hurt, not taking a jab at station fifty-three. But the other three companies for this time period have lost out on over six hundred thousand dollars, which was the amount of money that that company got extra over the other three companies. So, we tend to make the one company that we're going to take the money away from, it's really a shame. But what about the other three companies for the last twenty years that didn't have it extra money, that had to hold on to their equipment a little bit longer? That's, that's where the taxpayers get cheated a little bit. That's where there's the possibility of a problem. But I, I don't even want to go there. I want to get to where we're at now, where Ed is talking about, any other companies. And I hope after tonight, Station 53 will want to be a part of this. Because I think we're ahead of the survey. And I, I agree, the survey is going to come back and say, do X, do X, do X. The only thing that these four companies basically need to hear is how are we going to get finance going forward? And, and, and just, I don't want to belabor, but on Dave Albright's comments, you know, I've heard this for 20 years. Herb Slack's company's going to benefit. Joe Saxon's company's going to benefit. Well, guess what? We're all members of fire companies, no matter what. If, if you were sitting here as the mayor, what would I say? Dave, your company's going to benefit? Not going to benefit. I'm not going to benefit, Herbie's not going to benefit. I mean, it doesn't work like that. And from a clarification standpoint, at that meeting in May, at no time did I threaten any fire company. What I did say at that meeting was, you guys need to wake up and smell the coffee. Borough council at any time, and I said it in a council meeting, borough council at any time can dissolve your fire company in the state of Pennsylvania. It's hap- I have articles here, Jefferson Hills, January of 2019. Same kind of situation here, as we have here. So the point I made at that meeting was, you can say no, you can say no, you can say no. But I think this council is active enough that they're willing to go to the next step, which is, hey, maybe we can become one company. One building, maybe, I don't know. We're working that direction ahead of the survey. So just so everybody knows, it's, the other three companies are not the bad guys. These guys aren't the bad guys, it's just an inequity of funding. And the other three companies are hurting a lot more than they were 20 years ago.
So I, I guess you still didn't answer, like, the question of what it is. There, it's not going to benefit the taxpayer at all. There's no change.
Sure it is.
Alright, Hal.
Alright, let's, not getting into back.
I'm not going to get into it.
Betty, what do you have?
No, I don't have anything right now.
The only thing I just want to say is so everybody understands this. No matter what the survey says, no matter what decision, this council says we want you to merge, we want to put you in one building. If Mr. Devine made a motion tonight and everybody supported him, said one building, that's not our decision. We only control the funding. We can recognize one fire company, we can recognize two fire companies, we can recognize five fire companies. Everything that you guys have, you own. You own your own building, you own your own trucks, you own your own equipment. None of this is borough equipment or anything. So just so council understands when you keep making these statements, I want them to go to one, or I want them to go to two, Mr. Devine. That's really something we could wish for, but we can't force them to do anything. They're private entities that are, work under our own organization. We only could try to push you there or recommend this, right?
Well, to me, I, I see it differently.
Okay.
I looked at it, if we control, from what the mayor told us and what you're saying, if we control where that money goes, we have the ability to say, listen, these are the two fire houses that are going to be, that are going to be funded. Period. So that's, that's the way I would look at it.
Going to put them all together?
That's what I would do, yeah. That's what I would do.
Now, what if one of the part? What I'm saying to you is, if we have five companies right now, and we say we're going to recognize two.
Yes.
What, the other three, are we going to, what happens to them?
You mean, they, they got to jump on board, is what they got to do.
How about if they don't want to? How about if they don't want to jump?
If they don't, that's up to them. I mean, that's the part, that's the tough part. Listen, you're in a, you're in a time right now, the writing's on the wall, right? It's going to be depleted whether you want to or not. Just as Ed said earlier, a lot of guys in here with gray hair, right? In 10 years, there's going to be less people being firefighters or whatever. So it's going to happen regardless. And listen, I know it's not easy. Everybody has their team, everybody wants, it's just like the, the, the social clubs in town. We've had a bunch of them, they're all starting to close up and they're all struggling. You're, it's the same, it's the same position. So I just don't understand, until this council makes a decision to go to two or one, what they're going to fund, you're going to have the same stuff, that's it. But taking away one doesn't make any sense.
So let me ask you a question. Would you make a motion tonight to fund one fire company?
Without a building? No. Two, I would.
Where do you want to get the money for the building?
I'm not going to do, you got one in the.
One company.
No, I'm saying, right now you got two, right? That's the most feasible spot. You get two, you got one at, one in the town, and you got one in the other one. You got a brand-new building that was down on Swain Street, and you got a.
What do you mean a brand-new building?
Well, the.
Well, they, we're done with your company.
Yep, you know what, I'm not, a brand-new building, the add-on, the, whatever the add-on was.
Don't go back and forth with the audience.
It's your job, you got to stop them.
I got to stop you, no problem. Thank you for making that statement.
You're welcome.
Okay. So we got done at 6:58. Eighteen minutes. Alright, so the next company we'll bring in is 51. Everybody knows this company is on Wood Street.
I'm Francis Huffnall, I'm deputy chief of Bristol Fire Company, Station 51. The members of Bristol Fire Company believe that based on numerous publicly available documents and press releases, there are four volunteer fire companies housed in four stations providing services to Bristol Borough. We support the immediate and proper distribution of the volunteer fire company allocation equally between the four fire stations identified.
Can you talk a little louder, Fran?
I'm sorry. We support the immediate and proper distribution of the volunteer fire company allocation equally between the four stations identified below. Bristol Consolidated, Station 50, Bristol Fire Company, Station 51, Goodwill Hose Company number three, Station 52, and America Hose Hook and Ladder Company number two, Station 53. Statistics show that the service provided by these four stations are and have consistently been equal, and funding should reflect the same. The members of Bristol Fire Company appreciate the support the council has shown to the fire companies by increasing the fire tax and supporting and assisting the fire companies' applications for a grant for communication radios. This financial support has been extremely important in aiding fire companies to continue to provide a high level of service to the residents of Bristol Borough. And we look forward to working with the mayor, council, and other fire companies in moving forward.
Okay.
Sorry.
That was very quick. Uh, Louis, I'll start with you. You have anything for Tony?
I don't have any.
Uh, the only question I would have, do you believe that if your station was given that quarter of six or, I mean, which one? That's how much I, if they take, if you take the quarter of Station Six allocation, is that going to be more effective and more beneficial to the residents of the borough than the 32,000 that would go to them and help them, you know, continue to maintain what they're doing for the town?
I adjust the service provided by my fire company based on the funding we have. We get additional funding that allows us to provide, equip our members better and provide additional services as necessary. I can't speak for what, how it affects anybody else.
So I guess, let me, more specifically, not a, not a generalization, but the $8,000 or so that you're going to get from this allocation, that's going to be the quarter split from Six, Fire Station Six. With that $8,000, what would you be able to do that would make it better for the residents of the borough with that $8,000? What specifically would you be able to get done?
We can buy new turnout gear. Our current turnout gear is, is over 10 years old.
What's turnout gear?
Pants, helmets, boots.
And how does that, how does that provide anything beneficial for the, the residents of the borough? I understand it would be better for the firefighters, but.
Well, it reduces injuries to my, risk of injuries to my members.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I mean, we have, I mean, we can run a smoke detector program, we're installing free smoke detectors in, to residents. Uh, we have a lot of things going on. And additional money cuts down on the amount of fundraising that we have to do.
Okay.
Anything for him, Lorraine?
I, I have a question, yeah. Um, how many, so I've just learned too that there might be semantics with active. How many firefighters, and I, I meant to ask this of Mr. McQ as well, so maybe someone can answer that for me. How many firefighters do you guys have that actively fight fires?
What would you say, Robert, 20 to 25 members?
Mr. McQ, how many, how many firefighters, and I know you said that it can be kind of semantics. How many firefighters do you guys have that, that actively fight fires?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Thank you. That was my only question, thank you.
Joe? That's pretty good, Fran. Alright, Ed, the next one is 52. Who's speaking on, there'll be a.
Joel's going to want a second please.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
No, I'm good, thanks.
I'm sorry. Okay. Joel, do you want to just, for the record, state your company and everything?
Um, my name's Julian Bligh, president of Goodwill Hose Company number three at 190 Smithland Street in Bristol. I've been a member for 52, coming off 52 years. Our firehouse, we support the allocation of the money four ways. We recognize that there's four stations in the borough. Stations 52, 51, 50, and 53, or 25, whichever one you want to call it. We all have the same bills. I have bills, they have bills. Somebody said, how could that money, Tony, you asked that question. How can this money help me? Yeah, I spent $12,000 on hoes that should have been replaced years ago. But because I didn't get that $150,000 over the last 20 years, I couldn't replace that hose until recently. Okay, I spent, cut $7,500 on Scott packs. You asked how that helps the citizens of the borough. I cannot allow my members, and neither can they, allow their members to fight fires without the proper equipment. So if they don't fight fires, you don't have a fire department. You keep saying one fire department, two fire departments. Where's your two fire departments?
My two fire departments, I was just going to say, it would be a one by Wawa and Harriman, and you were doing it on Mifflin.
Who owns my building? I do.
Personally, you own the building?
Yes, as a member of our company, I own the building.
Personally, I'm saying it's under Julian Bligh.
As the president?
Yes, my name is.
Are you personally owning it, or as, whatever you are?
As the president, I own the building.
As the president, I own the building.
So here's the thing.
So would you sell, could you sell that building?
With the, with the approval of membership, yes. With the approval of membership.
Okay.
So, here's the thing. We are talking with other companies about a possible merge. You're talking about building one building.
No. I never, I.
You said one company or two?
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't say anything about building a building yet. Just telling you.
Well, it's going to cost you a lot of money. We feel we earned a tidy of that money. We feel, there's nothing against David or any members of 52s, I mean, 53s or 25s, I have nothing against them. I know Denny Parr for years. I know Harry Crowe for years. Donnie Crowe. Look, the thing is, we could use that money too. You asked what for? I just explained to you some of the things we could use it for.
Now, is it?
Alright, let, let me, unless you guys want to go back and forth, I don't think.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Go ahead, Tony, whatever you want to do.
Well, I was just, to me, the same question that, that I asked earlier is, is one-fourth of that allocation going to be more effective and more helpful to the residents of the borough? Or going into your station? Or is the full allocation going to be better for the residents of the borough if it goes to Sixes?
They still have one company. They still have one set of bills.
I know, but that's all I'm asking. I'm asking, is.
That would be better if it was split.
Okay, why would it be better?
Because then I could buy better equipment.
You guys already have a, a.
We have a bill on the trucks, just like Dave.
No, I'm not saying, I'm saying we already have enough equipment. I mean, that's what's been stated already. We have a plethora of equipment. We need to get rid of some of the equipment, maybe, and downsize. So what I'm asking you is, that quarter of the allocation that would go to your company, how would that be more effective? All I want to specifics, how would you use that eight grand?
I will buy new Scott packs, I will buy new bunker gear. That protects my members, which is beneficial to your, to Borough Bristol.
Right, I understand you buy, but what is it, like, how much money, or, I don't know what any of these things are, so you have to tell me.
Seventy-five hundred dollars I spent for Scott packs.
What are they?
The air breathing system.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we can't have them, we wouldn't do a building without it.
Right. Do we have them? We get 10? 10?
We've one, we have 12.
We got 12. Run for 7,000, fine, run it up.
Now.
If we had money, we'd have to beg for grants. We have to raise money.
Well, that leads me to another thing. So like, you want to penalize because you have to.
I'm not penalizing anybody.
Well, I'm just saying, Joel, you got to get, you just said, you got grants to do, which is great. So just us giving you that quarter of their allocation just make it easier for you. That's all you're saying. You make it easier that you don't have to generate so much money at fundraisers. It makes it easier for you, but it doesn't help the residents any. That's what I'm saying. I'm talking to.
It does absolutely, Tony.
Mayor.
Tony, it does absolutely.
No, I'm not saying, all I'm saying is, but what you're explaining to me, it's only helping your fire station.
It's only helping my firefighters.
Right. Only because you don't have to go get grants.
No, no, who do they help?
That's, I'm not saying, I think all of you guys are helping, that's the point.
You're stuck, huh? Tony, you put yourself in a, in a harbor.
I'm not, I'm not, but, you know, my thought is.
All, all that Mr. Katrina.
As, if we're going to present something. Allow him to present his case. Ask the question afterwards, please. Nothing against what you're asking right now, but.
No, I'm just saying, Lou.
I, I know when you're, I, we can all tell.
He said, do you want to go? Or, all I'm saying is.
Alright, knock it off.
Well, it's the same thing, you're asking the same questions.
Are you the council president?
It's Bligh, Mr. Bligh.
Well, he would make a statement.
I just want to make sure you're okay with this.
I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm fine. Tony, I answered your question.
Right. And I'm fine. I don't know why they got all upset.
Okay. Because it took us 15 minutes to get there. So.
I'm sorry, you got somewhere to go? Joel, you should stay room.
What I feel is that the allocation should be for, our members feel that way. And as far as them going out of business, I don't see that happening, but I, do I feel sorry for them? Yes. Do I think we all deserve more money? Yes. But I think we deserve some of that money we lost over the last 20 years. And I think it should start now.
Alright, uh.
I just have the same question that I've asked everybody. How, how many active, actively fighting fires?
12 to 15.
Seems like a good number, Joel.
Well, I can give them, you, my phone, get my phone and I can show them.
That's okay, I just.
Joel, I'm just joking.
I mean, we have, we actually have 40 members of our firehouse.
Thank you.
Not counting our older gentlemen. But I have 40 phone numbers in my phone, and 12 to 15 of them regularly fight fires.
Thank you.
Mr. Ricchio.
Yeah, I'm hearing talk of possibly, there's talk amongst the other three companies coming together. Hypothetically, if that were to happen, how would you expect to, would you, would you expect to get three-fifths of the, of that money? Or would you expect?
Well, if you have two fire departments, you get two, you get two. If you have two departments, two stations.
Just go for half then. You wouldn't be seeking three.
Well, I mean.
If three companies come together, you wouldn't want three-fifths of that money.
It depends on how you do it.
Um, what's that?
Depends on how you do it.
Well, I'm, what I'm asking is.
Are you, are you saying merge, or are you saying we're just going to come together?
I'm just saying, if, whatever you're, whatever you guys are doing.
We would get three-fifths.
Three-fifths, okay.
Yes.
No, that's.
Well, so that's what they did. That's what they did. They got, they get two fifths, but they're being penalized. You're going to do the same thing to get three fifths.
Tony, I talked to you years ago about this, and you were on the other side. You said there should be four recognized stations. That's what you told me.
Okay.
So why?
Why are we allocating five?
Mr. Bligh, I didn't, I didn't hear you. Did you say? Did you say?
I said, I had talked to Mr. Rikio years ago about this, and he said there should be four allocated stations.
That's what I thought he said.
So, now he's saying five. So, that's where my problem goes in.
Well, he didn't vote yet, so we don't know how he's gonna vote.
I don't know how anybody's gonna vote. I want everybody to vote the way they think they should vote. The same thing I say all the time. But I feel over the last twenty years, this shouldn't have happened in the first place, but it did. Now it's time to get it straightened out.
Mr. Tony, you have anything else?
No, I'm just saying, but, yeah, by, by taking, by taking that money, it's not gonna increase manpower. You're still gonna, here's the other thing. So, you have all these guys, you have four locations, we'll just use four buildings, four locations of fire departments throughout the, throughout the borough. A call comes in, and even though they're all stating they have twenty-five, fifteen, whatever, active guys. They might not be, it, it, it happens all the time. Trucks don't get out because they don't have minimum manning. So, going down, you, if you could get down to one or two stations and you get these guys to come together, that's gonna increase your, your manpower on the trucks with fewer trucks. Um, you know, that, that's what needs to happen. We need to go down to one or two stations. That's what has to happen. So, I mean, it, it, this is what this council has to do at some point in time.
But we don't have, we don't have a right to do that. We can't force them to merge. Or become one, or become two, or what.
I mean.
All we could do, I mean, you know, you only could allocate funding. So, look, we all wanna see this happen, we're doing what we can do. So, Betty, you have anything?
Yeah, I just think we need to stop saying how does this benefit the taxpayers? Because I don't think anybody in here would not protect the taxpayers, no matter what. So, we need to stop asking the same question over and over. They're gonna do what they have to do to protect the people of this town, I believe. Thank you.
Correct. Mr. Devine.
Yeah, I just actually have a question, Ralph. You can, what do you, Ralph, this is to you as council president. What do you think will happen if you decided, or we decided as a council, that we're only going to have two allocations? What do you think would happen? You would force them to have to come together because they won't be able to survive without that allocation. So, when you say things like, well, we don't have the power to force them to do anything, when you hold the purse strings, of course you do.
Well, basically, what you could do, and Mr. Aubrey stated this in his opening statement, and Mr. Bligh will speak on this. Everybody has, they all have their own bills to pay. They all have trucks to pay for. So, even if we recognize two companies and give the two companies the funding, how do these other two or three companies make payments on their equipment that they?
They don't, they sell it.
So, they sell it, and what if they can't sell it?
What do you mean? They can't sell it, then what else are they gonna do? There's other, if they're, if they're moving to two separate firehouses, either somebody's gonna sell it.
They only can fit so many trucks into a building.
Exactly, so they gotta sell them. I mean, is there, these guys would know better. Is it possible to sell equipment?
Yes.
Oh, all right, okay.
Not for, not for a third of what you paid for.
Right, but, I mean, that's anything. I mean, you're not gonna be able to get what you paid for. But all I'm just saying, in the long run, if you have more people and less equipment, the borough would be safer because there'll be, as Mr. Rikio was just saying, you'll have the manpower to use the equipment that you have.
Tony?
Yes.
Excuse me. If you were listening to Mr. Rikio, you're not gonna have the manpower. Because if you close a company, them guys aren't gonna go, if you close fifty-two's, I can't see more than fifty percent of our members going somewhere else. Where would you go?
All right, I'm not going to the audience, guys.
So, that's, that's what Mr. Riki said, Rikio said, so that's the problem there. The other problem is, yeah, you could, you could say we're gonna allocate two departments, and you're gonna pick two stations. You're gonna retrofit fit those two stations to fit the equipment you need in those two stations?
I mean, you're talking technical stuff that I, I don't wanna hear, I don't know.
Well, somebody's gonna have to pay to remodel buildings.
All right, well.
All right, so we're good with Joel's?
No.
Oh, God, I'm sorry.
I, I know after the Pico cleanup, the fire company went on the, extended themselves, got a mortgage to, to fix the building the way it needed to be.
To finish.
When it was done.
Yes.
Um, can you share? I mean, I know that's probably a.
How much we owe? I'm not gonna tell you that.
Okay. But is there, is there?
Tell them the monthly payment.
I'm sorry.
The monthly payment.
Our monthly payment is twenty-five hundred dollars a month.
Okay, because we heard, you know, there's a truck payment.
Yeah, we have a truck payment. Actually, I count our truck payment of another two thousand dollars a month.
I, I, I just want.
So, now we're at forty-five hundred dollars a month.
And I think that later on, beyond this meeting, I guess I said before, we have to go over and see, see where everybody's debts are. And, and I'm glad that, I know it, but I know that fire companies own their own stations. They own their own equipment. They own their own trucks. That's why, that's why you're on the hook for it, so we can't.
I get four Pico bills, three Comcast bills for one building. I get two oil bills for one building. So, I got the same amount of bills they have.
I, and, so I appreciate that we, that, and that's where I think it's mentioned before, that we can't force this on you because we can't say, we could take over anybody's company, we're gonna use, you know, number twos, you know, American hook and ladders building, or we're gonna use number threes. So, so that's not really in the discussion. Um, and when we talk about how does it benefit the borough, I think we all have to look at, this council is not trying to be retroactive. We're trying to be proactive. We're trying to take a leadership role in this so that we don't have to deal with this because it's gonna continue to get more complicated every year. Like I say, we all have gray hair, we all have, we're losing a little energy. But we have to do something for the future. And for the future, so, so the town's protected and the fire companies are protected. I can see myself, years ago, you built a fire company, you had a grill room, you had a, it was just like a social club. Today, you can't have that because, you know, you don't want a guy drinking and, you know, or somebody accusing somebody of drinking and then jumping into a truck or jumping on a fire equipment. So, it's become a different organization. It's not as nearly as much a social club, it's just a firefighting team now, so. And that's why I think you guys do it very efficiently, all of the companies with a lot less people than you used to have on the rolls. And I applaud just all for that. So, I, I think you gotta give us the information so the council can look at, you know. And we might not make the right decision, but whatever decision we make, if we're gonna try to make the right decision, then if it's not right, we're gonna work to make it right.
My request is this, just make a decision.
Yep, let's.
Let's get this over and done with. I don't wanna come back again next year and get through this stuff. You decide what you're gonna do. That's the only thing I can say.
That's right.
I mean, look.
I'll agree on this.
Look.
Found one thing.
I know everybody in here for a long time. I don't hate anybody in here. I disagree with people in here sometimes, but I don't hate anybody in here.
That's good to know, Joel.
Especially you, Lorraine. I love you.
Okay. Thanks, Joel.
Okay.
So, it's, uh, seven twenty. All right, Herb, you want me to go through public participation, or do you wanna speak first?
No, I, I like to.
What's that, Mayor?
Let Herb be speaking. Yeah, just a couple of things that, um, kind of things I heard tonight that don't fit the public record, and I just wanna clarify. One thing I want, I wanna address is the fact that I was accused of unethical behavior. That's the second time that that organization's done that. The first time the lawyer did it, it spun me up and up to look up the law, and the law was written in such a way that if something's being done that simply benefited my fire company and nobody else, and I had control of that, that might be unethical. I certainly don't have any control on how the borough spends their money. The second part of that is that the change to four actually benefits four of the five fire companies. So, I'm not the only one benefiting, the mayor's not the only one benefiting, four fire companies benefit. So, the thing of, uh, uh, of accusing me of, and the mayor of unethical behavior, that's just ridiculous. The whole thing started when number sixes and number twos announced in the newspapers that they had merged. And everybody keyed in on that word merger. And if you look up the word merger, it's two organizations that then become one. So, Dave said that they, they moved in, and I've talked to some people that were involved with the merger from number sixes. One person told me they hired a lawyer, and the lawyer drew up the paperwork. The chief at the time told me he signed paperwork that made them one organization. And, and that's, that's, that's what he believed. In two thousand and five, the Department of Community and Economic Development came in and did a survey. They only surveyed four fire companies. There's nowhere in this survey to mention of the word number sixes. Everything is America Hose Hook and Ladder, Station Fifty-Three. And at the time, the officers of that station, they had no objections to that report as how it was referenced. The other thing I wanna mention, they mentioned that in two thousand and fourteen, they made a decision to purchase a new fire truck. If you go back to two thousand and fourteen, that was the time that we were, we had the, uh, attempt to change the allotment, the lawyer came in, and we had, you know, a, a big event in council. So, that was July of two thousand and fourteen. And the stories that were given in those council meetings were that if they didn't get the money, they were going out of business. And so, they had to have all of that money, or they'd be closing their doors. There were signs, please save our fire station. And now we heard tonight that at the same time, they were deciding to buy almost a five-hundred-thousand-dollar fire truck. Which doesn't make any sense to me, that if your finances were that bad, that you needed to have that money in July, that by January, you hadn't figured everything out, that now you can buy a new fire truck. And, and once they did that, number sixes sold both of their fire trucks. They had to borrow one fire truck, a rescue truck, from Bristol Township to go to rescue calls. And then number two's ladder truck ran all of the fire calls, the dumpsters, the cars, everything, for two years while they were waiting for a new truck. So, they were able to cover the town, they were able to provide protection to the town without that new fire truck. And the last thing I just wanna mention is that, they mentioned that, uh, they have two numbers that they report to the state. That's only occurred like within the last five years. For the first nine, eighteen, nineteen years, everything was reported as one fire company, one fire station, and it's only, every time we ask for reallocation, that's when the things start to pop up, that there's a split, there's a change. And, and the last thing that I just wanna mention is that the mayor gave you, uh, some charts. I look back to the data, all the way back to two thousand and eight, and basically, the four fire stations provide twenty-five percent of the service. And that, those numbers really don't change much. So, each one's providing one-fourth of the service, and so the companies are asking then that they be given one-fourth of the allocation. That they get paid equal to the amount of service that they're providing. That's what I mean.
Before we go to public participation, do you have anything?
No.
All right, before we go to public participation, because I anticipate we're gonna hear from a lot of people, we're gonna take about a three to five-minute recess. So, we're in recess.
Well, the only thing I can say is like, should we...
Okay, like...
Exactly.
We gotta raise attention or I'm gonna shut them doors so everybody can keep talking out in the hallway. All right, I'm gonna open up public participation and hopefully, you know, we don't hear the same thing. We're trying to hear argument, so that's what we're here about. So anybody, let's start outside the doorway. Anybody out there that wanna speak?
Anybody out there wanna speak at this station?
Okay. Anybody on this side of the room wanna speak, go to the podium and state your name.
Hi, I promise I'll be brief. Ken Bixler, Cleveland Street. I really wasn't gonna get up, and then I heard something that the mayor said that made me sit up in my seat. It's been recommended since the seventies that Bristol's fire companies come together, consolidate, whatever. Surveys over, after survey. Even the mayor, who's a lifetime member, fifty-two, said that's what the goal is to do. And you have two, two companies that did that. They came together, you know, joint forces to combine manpower, utilize expenses, which was recommended for decades, even, I think it was back in the seventies, the Grundy Foundation, when I was in there, recommended it. So these, these guys did it, and now they're under scrutiny for doing it. You know, like, so I, I heard others say, you know, if they go down to one or two, where are you gonna put all the trucks? Well, I heard other firemen say, there's trucks that don't get out of the bays when the fire alarm rings because they don't have enough manpower. So anyhow, what, what alerted me when the mayor said, cutting the funding to four will be the first step to consolidation, right? He said that earlier. Now, you're gonna cut funding to accompany the combined forces with another one to save expenses and combine manpower and reward the other three that didn't. And first of all, I wanna extend my gratitude to all you firefighters. I was firefighter years ago.
Funny way to show.
And we owe, you know, all our gratitude to you guys. But anyhow, so I don't see how that is the first step, by cutting funding to the, to the two companies that did the right thing and, and rewarding the others that stayed apart. That's the first step to consolidation? That's all. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, anybody else on this side of the room? State your name and your position with a fire company. I'd like to...
My name's Stephen Reeves. I'm a principal of the Bristol Consolidated Volunteer Fire Company, Station Fifty, the assistant chief there. I'm a proud resident of Bristol Borough. Just two quick things. Here's the negative.
Have an address, Steve, for the record.
I prefer not to put that out there.
Pardon me?
I prefer not to put that out there.
Oh, okay. No problem.
Yeah. So the negative, here's the negative. Oh, so actually, let me step back. I put a lot of thought into today, in today's meeting. And, you know, what's really the goal of today's meeting? Really, today's goal of the meeting was about the finances. That's what it's about. However, the, the elephant in the room, in the room is, is your, your biggest commodity, which is the manpower. That's actually your biggest issue. But today, we're talking about finances. Every fire company this year has struggled at one point or another getting their truck out of the door. Every, every company. All four, all four companies. And, and it's just, that's the time, this is the way it is. So unfortunately, the manpower's down, you know, you're, you're not getting the manpower to the station to get your truck out. As an incident commander, as a chief here in the borough, I'm only expecting one fire truck from each station. I'm not expecting anything more than that. I'm not looking for anything more than that. The, the call doesn't request anything more than that. So each company's providing one fire truck, or each, each fire station's providing one fire truck. So if you're talking about financials, there's, nobody's providing more of a service than the other. That's just not happening here in the borough. There seems to be a lot of gloom and doom we talked about, you know, there's manpower issues and stuff like that. There has been conversations. That's the positive. There, there is conversations going on. There, there's, there are hard conversations ahead, however, though, they are occurring and they're positive. They're positive things. People are gonna be upset and say, oh, the three fire companies are talking without the, the other fourth company. Well, I can understand that. I can understand where that comes from. But there's, that group, that group that is, is conversing right now wants to include Station Twenty-Five, Fifty-Three. We want them to be involved in this. We don't think that this will survive without them involved in this, so...
So why aren't you involved?
Excuse me?
Why aren't you involved?
Why aren't they involved?
Right now? Either. I thi, I think the reason is, are you talking about me, or are you talking about the, why aren't they involved in the conversations, or...
Right.
I think there's some mistrust there, to be very honest with you. I think there's mistrust, there's, I think there's a history there. I, I think we could totally get over that history. And it, and I would sit down with Chris, and I'd sit down with Mr. Albright, and, you know, we could, we could hash this out, it's very easy. However, though, like, like I said, that's the reason why they're not involved right now. So that's all I have really to say. If you have any other questions for me...
Steve, I just wanna say, you have gray hair, and I think you've got a few years to go yet, don't you?
I was just saying, out there, I got promoted, and I got a ten-year-old old at the same time.
That's right.
Anybody else on this side of the room?
Thank you, Steve.
Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything? Wait till, when we're done, Dave.
My name's Tony Boot, Shiloh Pond Street. I'm speaking for myself, not behalf of any fire company. I believe if this council doesn't look or appoint the leader, your appointed leadership into merger, either all the fire companies, whether it be one, two, three, or however you guys wanna do it, money is a necessary evil, but there's a national crisis of volunteers right now, less than thirty thousand out there in Pennsylvania. I believe maybe even less now. We are too busy fighting amongst ourselves. It's negativity. Firefighters are fighting amongst themselves over this. I think this council should appoint the leadership to start talking serious mergers, whether it be one or two. My personal belief is one department in this town. If you look at some of the other departments in the county, at how much area they cover, I think one department would be sufficient for, for this town, and I think we'd be stronger. I know there are, you know, people for years, separate, whatever, but I think the younger generation, I can tell you, I make a lot of the calls, and none of us are putting full manpower on the trucks. It is very rare. I'm talking three o'clock in the morning, two o'clock in the afternoon, it doesn't matter. We are all struggling. The chiefs have to come down and drive the trucks, 'cause they may have manpower, two or three guys, but there are no drivers, 'cause it takes a lot to drive a truck. You know, you just don't put anybody behind the wheel of a truck. But I believe this is really not the solution. I mean, merger has to happen in this borough for us to survive. As a resident, I believe if we keep going the way we are going, stations are gonna go out of business through nutrition of membership. So I believe the real course of action here should be looking at merger and survival down the line. Money's always a necessary evil. I don't believe taking money directly from the company is gonna resolve anything now. If you are gonna do that, my belief is, give them five years to work it out. But I think manpower is a necessary evil, and we, none of us have it. And I think the council, you guys do have the power to make a resolution, the, maybe not force merger, but to force talks of merger. You guys have that power 'cause you hold the purse strings. That's just my personal belief, you know? And I think that's the direction this borough needs to go, is to start finding a way to work together and resolve the manpower as you're going down the line, whether it's equipment or whatever. But if we don't address the manpower with training requirements and everything else the state and feds put out there anymore, we are not gonna be able to survive, none of us. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Anybody else on this side of the room?
Christopher Crimp, Three Thirty-three Monroe Street. I recently bought my house about four years ago, but I've been around this far house and been in this town for, since I was seventeen years old. I have a lot of love for this town, and I know a lot of these people behind me on both sides of the aisle. But if we take and we merge, or we take money from one fire company to the other, from my experience over the years, you're never gonna get any of these other ones to merge, no matter how much they talk about it. It's always been about the dollars and cents. So it's just like Tony said, they're, they're gonna want three, three-thirds of, of the money. Because ever since I've been a kid, everything with every firehouse, it's always been, most of the fights have been about the dollars and cents. Who's gonna take the relief money? Who's not gonna take the relief money? Where the relief money's going? They got relief money, they got to buy gear from. All that stuff is, is relative to what you do. If you take hea, half of our money, which is for one fire company to the other fire company, I live in this town, I can't always, I'm fifty-one years old, I can't always make a truck. I can't always be there, but I'm still a member of the firehouse, and it, it's, that's the way it's working out. I just think that this is, this whole conversation about taking money from anybody is just ludicrous, because it's not gonna accomplish anything anybody talked about back here. Nothing. It's just not gonna do it. All it's gonna do is put more fighting in between, and everybody's gonna keep going in the wrong direction.
And what company are you, what company are you with?
Uh, Fifty-Three, Twenty-Fives.
That's Wawa, right? I say Wawa. All right.
Yeah. I've been, like I said, I've been in this town since I was seventeen, I've been affiliated with this firehouses since then. So I just, I worry because I have a house in that side of town. You know what I mean? And something happens, one of the fire companies, we cut people down, we cut services down, and now what happens? My house gets as far.
Anybody else on this side of the room would like to speak? Okay, so we're gonna end public participation, I'm gonna go back to these companies for a final comment before this council votes. I'm a little disappointed, because I really thought that other members would've got up and spoke, I thought other members would've made more of a compelling argument on both sides, whether it was for or against. So, and I'm just disappointed in this whole process that, the way it took place tonight. I really thought that I would hear more facts about what's going on. I'll, I'll reserve what I have to say until I, I get done. So let's start with, I'm gonna, Dave, I'm gonna let you go towards the end, because you went first.
Okay.
So let's go in reverse, or let's go to, who's fifty? That's... You?
I agree with you, Ralph. I'm disappointed, too, that after five years, we're still talking about this. So it's not making the, the companies work together any better. I think right now is the time where I think they do wanna work together, so... Whatever your decisions you make, it's, it's on you. But you are responsible for the fire protection in town. You are responsible for the funding, you're responsible to establish the fire protection in town. I mean, if you look for police, if you have a police department, I think the state police will come in and do it for you. You'll find someone else to come in and do fire protection for you, and good luck with that. But like I said, Fifty's is four, four-way split, and whatever happens, happens. We're still committed to working towards one station, no matter what you decide here tonight. And I hope yous are committed to working towards a better fire service in town.
But you, you sit there and you say, it's council. This, we didn't initiate this entire thing tonight.
No.
We have to make a decision on it, and I understand that, but...
But you're responsible for the funding.
You know, we didn't, we didn't want this, you know, to happen.
Oh, honestly, you're, I'm saying, I'm disappointed, too, that we're still here, that the decision wasn't made when it first came up.
All right.
Because I think I was here a couple of years ago, doing the same stuff. And I don't like being here at all, anyway. I'd rather watch this on TV. You know what I mean?
Number, number fifty-one.
It always comes down to money. I mean, I think the first week I was a member, was over here at council, 'cause there was something where councils playing one fire company off another, or there was a dispute and had to be settled and everything else. And it gets old. But when you look at funding, you don't pay our, all our bills. We're, of all your major departments, you know, the police don't have a bake sale when they need a radio. Public Works don't have, you know, a traffic collection when they need a snowplow. We're the ones that end up having to raise money, and that's why it's such a sensitive topic. You know, every survey that we've had says, oh, you should do this, you should do that. But there's never that chapter that says, and then a miracle occurs and we pay for everything. I mean, I've heard for years, well, you guys should've built a building with, and gone in with these guys or those guys. Well, how is it gonna pay for it? This fire station's a couple million dollars. And it's the last meeting I was at that somebody seriously brought up, you know, building a firehouse. The discussion was like, oh, we only need like one or two bays, and, you know, so who's gonna pay for it? Well, number three's, they got money. So we, they build the building, and then we would rent it off them. And it's like, eh, it doesn't work either. There needs to be a funding solution in place for a lot of this stuff. That, that would solve a lot of problems. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. Jules?
Well, the only thing I can say is, I am for four allocations, four companies being allocated the money. As far as us having a lot of money, people think that because of our building, that didn't happen. And the amount people think that we got to build that building is double of what we got, if not triple of what we got. So we don't have a lot of money. We pay our own bills, we raise money. And if I didn't have bingo, we'd be in deep... You know, I mean, and even that's getting more expensive, trying to run bingo, cost of bingo, plowing our parking lot, cleaning our floors. They all cost us money. So we could use the money just as well as everybody else. I don't wanna see anybody go out of business, but I don't think that would happen. They'd have to figure out how they're gonna do it, and the same as I do, when I have to sit down with our treasurer and our members and say, okay, how are we gonna pay for these bills? What are we paying? We have to raise the money.
Dave?
Okay. First of all, I wanna, I wanna re-clarify the position my company's in. We are, we are totally in favor of talking about a merger between one company. The, the day at that meeting we had in the, in May of two thousand and nineteen, you were there, and sat, or, Digi Zepi was there, we're the only ones that said we were in favor of it. In favor of it moving into one station. We never denied that. It has to happen. We all see that. So to make that statement that we never, we were never imposed, or we're... So to make that statement that we never, we were never imposed, or we were never in favor of it, is not true. We were the first ones to even say anything at that meeting, and everybody else didn't say a word at that meeting. So number twos, Bristol Six, number twos, are in favor of talking building, whether it's one company, two companies, whatever. They talk about using that money to buy turnout gear and air packs. That's money. The equipment is paid from by Relief Association. That's not this borough allocation, or would not be funded by this borough allocation. That money, those packs and those gear are paid for through Relief. We do the same thing. We pay for our gear, we pay for our packs out of Relief Association. Yes, you say I didn't answer you. I had taken several conversations with Rafi over the summer. He knew where I stood. And he told me that he had conversation with you, and you were not in favor of my proposal back to him, which was given us four years.
Say this again, Dave, I'm missing something. Say this again. Who's he?
Mayor Saxton is saying that he had no idea where we stood on this allocation. My conversation with you is, you knew my stand. I made my proposal to you.
Right.
You told me you went to Mayor Saxton, and Mayor Saxton said no. And that's what you told.
You made to me.
Correct.
I gave it to the mayor.
You talked to the mayor, and the mayor said he was not in favor of it.
Exactly. That was over four or five years.
Well, yes.
Whatever you were saying.
Right. Give us our allotment now. Give us, give us time to get our finances together.
I explained that to them.
Give us time to get our finances arranged, so we can, we can survive. I mean, we did the right thing back in ninety-six. Whether you call it merger, get together, cohabitate, whatever you want to call it, we got together. There's nothing in the state that says we're merged. There's a whole set of procedures, Orphans Court, the state fire chief has to approve everything. There's a whole bunch of stuff that never happened. So to say here, we've merged, we're one company, and yes, we try to operate as one company, we maintain one set of officers. Because, believe me, there's enough fire officers in this town right now, between the four companies versus the five. So that was the reason why we did all that. We just tried to combine everything as much as we could.
Mr. Dijesepe, can I, can I, this is not just a question for Dave, it's probably one I should have asked of everybody that stood up there. So I don't want it to be like a free-for-all, but maybe the guys that had spoken on behalf of their, is anyone not in favor of one fire department?
I have questions for it.
Yeah, of course. I mean, yeah, obviously, there would be lots of...
How do you pay for it?
I just mean conceptually, the idea.
When you figure out how to pay for it, it's...
All right.
There's money available. I think there would be money available, whether through the redevelopment authority, grants, whatever. I think there would be money available to build a fire station, where all we would have to do is maintain it.
For monthly billing?
I'm saying for maintaining.
Would, we're not going to go back?
That's my opinion.
All right. How's Dave? All right, so on one count, I'm going to, Herb, do you have any final comments?
I just want to comment one thing on the Relief Association. If you paid attention to that over the past, I don't know, ten years, those numbers have come down dramatically. A large chunk of that Relief Association is, money is for an insurance policy that all of the fire companies contribute to, that provides extra insurance to the firefighters. And by the time that's done, it might be like this year, you might have seven thousand dollars left. You really don't do a lot with seven, you know, you're not buying a bunch of air packs. You might buy one a year, and so by the time you replace them, they want you to replace everything by standard every ten years. No matter what the condition is, the recommendation is, you need to replace it every ten years. And so that puts a lot of burden on the fire companies to be out there replacing that, because you don't want to be in a position where one of your members wore a piece of equipment that was more than ten years old, and something happened to him, and then the lawyers jump down on you and say, you weren't meeting national standards with your personal protective. So we're working, the state's trying to work on finding out why that money dropped the way it did, and to get it back to where it used to be. But right now, that's diminished every year. I think each company got like ten thousand dollars this year. It's not a lot of money.
Jerry, you want to?
Since I came back into office in two thousand and sixteen, three of the four fire companies have approached me and asked me what we were going to do about funding. I asked them, well, what do you want to do? And they said, we want to be recognized as four fire companies. You know it's only four, the council knows it's only four, it comes up every year. I had three fire companies ask me to move ahead on this. I said I would do that. I tried to be fair and open about it. At all the fire board meetings, anytime that we discussed it, it was in open with all the companies that were there. I do disagree with President Albright a little bit, relative to what I said or I didn't say. But I'll say this, that what I meant was that, and it's in our June and July meeting minutes for the council, that out of that May meeting, Mr. Dijesepe and I had an expectation that the four fire companies would get back to us on how we were going to move forward to distribute this money. That was the question. That's in the June meeting of the borough meetings and in the July meeting. Because my, my good friend and the Bristol reporter, Mr. Bixler, has had that, you know, on Facebook. So, look, I'm mayor, police, fire department come under my management. I try to listen to the chiefs of the police department and the fire department to help make decisions. The other three departments requested this, and I've moved it forward, because council is the only entity that can do this. I firmly support it. Just for some statistics, that the fire chief reports every month, that is provided by the four fire companies, average staffing per response from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and eighteen, Station Fifty, four point four six, Station Fifty-One, six point six one, Station Fifty-Two, six point three five, Station Fifty-Three, but three point one. Station Twenty-Five, three point one, so it's six point one. But it gets reported as Station Fifty-Three. So if you combine, if you combine the two allocations, it's the same average. Number of responses over that same four-year period. Station Fifty, one hundred and forty-three. Station Fifty-One, one hundred and thirty-one. Station Fifty-Two, one hundred and twenty. Station Twenty-Five, Station Fifty-Three, combined, one hundred and seventeen. So the answer, or the question here is, is it one company, or is it two companies? If you want to call it two companies with one set of officers and one group of people responding, that's fine. But the allocation should be split four ways, and that's my recommendation.
Does council, anybody, because I want to say something, does anybody, Lorraine, have anything you want to add to this, or you good?
I'm okay.
I do have a question for maybe our solicitor. If, whatever we decide about the allocations tonight, if council wanted to go on record that we just intend on, and we want the fire companies to intend on eventually consolidating into one company, can we do that by resolution, just as a statement of intent as opposed to, because I think we're in a place right now, here's the silver lining, as I see it. It seems like we are back where we've been with a lot of infighting, which we are. But the one thing that I've never seen when we've been here, is that just about everybody is saying that consolidation has to happen. And that's new, in my opinion, at least sitting here. And I think that we shouldn't miss this opportunity to at least go on the record as saying, this is what we believe should happen. I understand that there are questions about money. I understand that it's not something we could just put into effect right now. But I would like to go on record as saying that this is something that in my tenure, now, I'm going to be here for another four years. I would like to see that happen in that time, aside from, aside from what we're talking about with the allocation tonight. And I don't know if that's something we could just do as a resolution to say we intend on, or not.
Certainly, council can express that. I don't know if it needs to be by resolution, but council can express their preference that companies work towards a consolidation to one or two companies. I think council's done that in the past.
Right. I agree with you, which is why I'm wondering if a resolution would hold a little bit more...
It doesn't, because as Mr. President said, this council has the right to decide who the money, that real estate taxes are allocated to and the foreign insurance is allocated to. It has no power to force any of the companies to do anything. And that's unfortunate. The state hasn't taken any lead in this either. You think the state would step in. So it's going to take everybody to work together, which it sounds like we're making some progress. But yes, the council can express that policy, but I don't know if it holds...
So how does the council express that policy? Just by...
Somebody wants to make a motion to adopt the policy to encourage the fire companies to work towards consolidation to one or two companies.
I would like to do that. You know, even if it's during our work session, where I ask us to consider it for next week as per our voting session. And again, I'm talking about, this is independent of what we're actually discussing tonight. I just don't think we should personally miss the opportunity to go on record as saying, you know, while there is some, you know, headbanging, there is a lot of agreement that's going on as well, which I think is a possibility.
I'm getting final comment, Mr. Devine.
Yeah, I mean, I was going to save it for when we have the motion, but what Greg's saying, I understand, but it's, just saying isn't going to do anything. I mean, it's a waste of time to have a resolution that you can't enforce, just to put it on record to say, whatever. I mean, if nothing can be done about it, there's no reason to, you know, to make a resolution about what we believe. I think that we have the ability to do something, and I'll wait for the motion to give my comment, but that's all I have.
Mr. Riquel. All right, I just want to say just a couple of things. One is that the argument that was made to me prior to tonight from different, and look, I talked to a lot of people on both sides, there's four buildings, each building has two trucks. I don't know the names of the trucks, whether they're pumper, I don't understand all this stuff. But I understand there's four, four physical buildings. And I understand that there's eight trucks, and each building hosts two trucks. Whether we need eight, whether we need five, that's not my call, I'm not, I don't know enough about it. And that's why the state is making some recommendations. But if you look at the argument on this side, that that eight thousand dollars may not be a lot of money, but like Jules said, that's going to help them make some payments that they need. If you look at the argument on Dave's side, they have a fire truck that they purchased that they use this money. So it's a difference of twenty-one thousand dollars, that if you split this, twenty-eight thousand, everybody would get seventy-one fifty or whatever, because it's twenty-eight six oh three, versus them getting the whole twenty-eight thousand. So you're not losing twenty-eight thousand, you're still getting seventy-one fifty of that money. But the four, going back to, if they had four trucks in that building, and they had double or triple the equipment, and they were doing things more than the other ones, then I could say it. When I stated last time this came up, I would never do anything to hurt a fire company, and I supported their fire company, because I believed in that. And I didn't know enough about what was going on financially. Look, everybody's got financial problems, whether, I don't think there's one company here that could say, oh, we got a ton of money in the bank. The other thing, I'm just going to throw out a hypothetical, when you say you want to go into one building and building a new building, and I mentioned this to the mayor, and it's something that I think they need to discuss down the road, is what we're missing the opportunity is, that if we only need four trucks or six trucks, and whatever these trucks are, again, I don't know, but we have a building here that's paid for, that could be rent-free, the electric could be free, and nobody would have any burden on trying to raise money. We would put some kind of a extension on the front of this building, historically, to make it look just like it's always been there, not like, you know, brick and really dress it up with the same roof. And I thought about this, you can move the Iron Fox truck to Herbie's station, which is, I think, the oldest firehouse for a museum. We don't want to hurt number threes, they got a mortgage and all, we'd have to see how that works. The one up in Wawa has income coming in from an adult daycare, which I don't know what that mortgage would be. So it's something to sit down, but I think you can put at least six trucks in this building, and there will be no cost to any of the firemen or any of the fire companies. So when you really want to sit down, you want to make it one, we don't need another building, we don't need another, you know, does it need other mortgages? And you can use number three's fire company for everybody to socialize, to raise money, because they have one of the best facilities around for that. So it's just something that I want to plant that seed in everybody's mind. So if there's no more argument, and nobody else has anything they want to say, either we get a vote on the floor, or, I'm sorry.
Can I speak?
Go ahead.
To answer, or to repeat his question of the...
What's your name for the record?
Chris Reed, the fire chief down by the Wawa. Everybody knows. So he says that I only send one report to him for Fifty-Three. Everything that I send to Herbie, it's two stations. I send a separate report on one spreadsheet that has Station Fifty-Three and Station Twenty-Five's calls. We can't get Twenty-Five's boxes, so the state or the county doesn't recognize Twenty-Five as getting any alarm systems, which means every call that we get is box Fifty-Three or whatever. That gets reported to county. So him saying that I only report under one Station Fifty-Three is false, yet again, it's two stations. The state is the same way. I have to log into two different systems to report for each station, one for Fifty-Three's and one for Twenty-Five's. I mean, it's beating a dead horse. You can't repeat that it's two separate stations. We told you that. We didn't file anything with the courts. Somebody might assign something, but nothing was ever officially filed with the Orphans Court, with the state of Pennsylvania. They recognize us as two separate companies. You're stating that you can fit six trucks in here, my question is, where would we all park?
You have a parking lot.
Where's, to house?
We could make, I mean, they're all logistic things that we can talk about. But as the fire chief, I expected you to get up right now and really start talking about finances. And again, we missed that opportunity. We're talking about boxes and cars.
I let the president speak, until it got to the point where the conflict of interest that we stated in the meeting, to you, it's shown, one hundred percent.
I think the only person that made a good argument tonight was...
And that's why you spoke.
I'm drawing Dave and Jules, so, I mean, that's where I have, if I'm listening to testimony, they're the two guys that I'm going to be voting on.
But in that meeting, did you not say that you would, would, hypothetically speaking, that if the borough built one station, what company out of those meetings said, we would be one hundred percent moving to one Station Four? Correct. And now, all of a sudden, we get sideswiped, that three other stations were talked about, about merging. We didn't get any phone call from the mayor asking what our input is after that May meeting. I've requested for the documents that Chief Slack said that he has, still haven't gotten that. So the ball stopped when we left that meeting.
I think the ball stopped when you canceled the meeting on the twentieth.
I never canceled the meeting on the twentieth. I have the text message.
When this whole game plan changed?
It wasn't a game plan. All I asked, all I asked was the mayor, was can we invite council, because is exactly...
And that's why we're here.
Correct. But nobody canceled that meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right. We're done, there's no more public protest. Does anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Cattroci.
I'd like to make a motion that we distribute the held-back two thousand and nineteen money to Station Fifty-Three. And two thousand and twenty's allocation will be split four ways or less. That's the motion, not who it's going... That's, that's the motion, not who it's going to or where it's going, but it's going to be split four ways or less. Some of this will have to do with the report we get back from the state and some more of the research. And now that I think everybody wants to talk to each other, maybe we can come up with, with a solution. But that is my motion.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor. I have a second. Second by Mr. Pezzeta. Questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Yes, I have a, a comment. I think what Mr. Pezzeta said was absolutely spot-on in the sense of there is a feeling that everybody wants to get together. They want to merge, they want to talk. The only thing that's going to hinder that is going to be making a decision to cut the allocation for one of the, one of the stations or one, I don't know how you guys put it, or one of the companies, whatever that is. The only thing that's going to hinder that is, is that right there, because it doesn't make any sense right now to do it. The only thing that makes sense to do right now is to continue to give the allocations and make a statement for the future of when they want to do it. You want to get it within your four years? I just got elected, I would like to get it done in my four years. So at the end of that four years, we will have something in place that we are going to move to one location, one central location, or two. That's the only thing that makes sense to me to move forward. By taking their allocation does nothing, but it would, to me, it would just piss them off. Why would they want to get together and work? It's, it's going to be...
My motion didn't say that.
To what? Yeah, right now, I'm talking about for four, I'm talking about, listen, I don't want to be bad, but I'm, I'm saying it.
Let him finish, Tony, finish what you got to say.
So what I'm, I'm talking about, we're going to talk about in the future, like every chief that came up or president that came up to speak said the same thing. They don't want to be here again next year. They don't want to be here the following year. So what Mr. Crotrochi is saying, I understand, but it's only going to be putting the problem off until next year. Let's put something ahead so we look at it. Listen, don't let them worry about it for the next four years and let's go about our business. That's the only...
I, I just want to say, first of all, in, in Mr. Crotrochi's motion, I think it, it should be clear that Mr. Crotrochi's motion includes four allocations he didn't say where to, or how that will be distributed, or what that will look like. So I think what, what I, first of all, I, I support this motion. There are a few things I want to say about the motion. I, I support the motion because I do think it's just at this point in time, in their situation, it's unfair to just not allocate that money. I believe that. I also believe that, that we need to start really moving in a direction of consolidation. I truly believe that as well. I do believe that, and I am going to ask for what I had asked Mr. Salerno about, I understand what, what Mr. Devine's saying, it has no weight of, of effect right now, but I disagree in the sense of that there's no meaning behind putting something on paper about what you believe, because I think it becomes a building block and, and we can no longer sit here and, and no one else can accuse us of not having a sense of where we want to go. And I think that that's something important as well. I, I would like to say though, you know, I know a lot of the guys, I've talked to a lot of the guys in the station, you know, it is in my ward and, and I support you guys. Mr. Saxon and, and Chief Slack, in my opinion, I have, having known them, they, they believe that there was a better way. I might disagree in this situation. But I don't think it's helpful when we get into conversations about integrity and, and who they are as people. I, I don't think that's helpful because I know them both to be men of integrity. They might disagree with you, you know, whispering under your breath, effing liar as you're walking away, I don't think that's helpful. I don't think that was helpful. I think what Mr. Albright did was great. I don't think that last five-minute performance was helpful. So, you know, and my point is that if we're going to do this, we can't, we just can't flare up like that. I mean, you know, tensions will rise every once in a while, I get that, but I just wanted to make it clear that while I might not agree with Mr. Saxon and Mr. Slack on this exact point right now, I agree with them long-term, and I don't think they're anything other than men of integrity, so just want to make that clear.
I would just like to clarify, and I think it's been out, but just so, my motion is to pay what we owe for 2019. I think it's unfair at this point to say it's going to go away. Second part of my motion is, next year's allocation will be four or less. And I don't know where it's going to go, who it's going to go to, but it's going to force this council and these fire companies to get someplace where it makes sense. So that's, that's my motion.
Can I, can I say something? I personally think, would rather it be, give them the allotment this year and cut it over the four-year time. I don't see that on our motion right now, so I, I don't...
There's a motion on the floor. We can't change a motion.
All right.
Just a comment on the motion?
No. Harvey? You can comment on the motion.
Just to say that with your, with Mr. Crotrochi's motion, your second, council just needs to keep in mind, you've already taken the step by signing that resolution to have the DCED come in and do the assessment of your fire department. So you've already made a commitment. Of course, you don't have to follow that commitment if you don't choose to, but they're going to present you with an assessment of your fire department, not financial, an assessment of your fire department. Could be a little bit financial, but the Borough Council in July agreed to do that. The DCED is doing the survey, and that's what this is all about. That's why we're moving in this direction. And hopefully, the fourth company will jump into the, to the fray and start to merge with everybody, I don't want to use that term, but at least start to talk as four companies moving ahead. That's the commitment that I have, and I know Chief Slack and Deputy Chief Gosman have. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to say one thing before I, first of all, there's a fire board meeting every month. I want to take at least 15 minutes to a half hour, one more every month, to discuss this merger or everybody coming together as one. And I want to know, this council wants to know, what company wasn't there and why they weren't at this meeting? So nobody could say they weren't invited to this meeting or, you know, they felt like they were left out. So we want to report monthly over the next six months until this report comes back from the state. Once the report comes back from the state, it's something that this council needs to look at. We'll never go through this again. We're just going to make a vote on where this funding goes. We have that right to do that, but I agree with Mr. Crotrochi, and I agree with his motion. I think what he's doing now is forcing everybody's hand to make a decision. And by him saying it will not be five next year, it'll be four or less, I think the message has been sent that we're done. You're either going to merge, come together, because our main concern is the taxpayers of this town has the best fire company that we could put out there. And we know there's a manpower shortage. You can't fight fires or have eight trucks with only 12 members or 14 members responding when you need a minimum manpower to leave a station with X amount of men per truck. So you can have all the trucks and you can have all the equipment you want, if you don't have the manpower, they're going to be sitting in your station. So I'd really like to consider something I threw out there with this maybe meeting here, and I'm, I'm available to attend any meeting, anytime that any fireman wants me to meet, but I will only meet in a public's place at a fire board meeting. I don't want to meet with anybody privately, because I never did that in the past, I don't want to do that moving forward.
Ralph, I'm sorry, can I, can I just add one more thing? Something I wanted to say you alluded to. I think it's very important based on this motion too, that members and, and the organizations themselves kind of decide on their plan of action as to what they would like to bring to the table to these conversations, because not being a part of the conversation, I don't think will be helpful at all.
And Herbie, as the fire chief, we're going to demand that you present some reports back to us. We're not going to sit here and, well, you know, this, I don't want to say it the wrong way, we're on TV, but we need to really start drawing a line and saying, and everybody's got to follow along.
We'll have a section in the chiefs' re, the minutes for the fire board meetings that'll strictly address that issue.
And I hope everybody understands how much we appreciate everything that everybody does for this town. And Dave, you did an outstanding job and you did it with class. I want you to know that. Okay, roll, roll call vote? Mr. Ricchio?
So we're voting to this year, yes, next year?
Louis, this year, yes, next year will be four or less?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Mr. Devine?
Yes.
Mr. Pezzeta?
Yes.
Ms. Cullen?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
No. Sorry.
Mr. Crotrochi?
Yes.
Mr. De Giuseppe?
Yes.
The motion carries six to one. Okay, thank you for your time, everybody. All right, we're going to go into... Okay, hold up, guys. Go to the podium, Dave, somebody...
I don't think this should just be a fire chief. I think the president's or...
We have any questions?
That's, that's what I said. That's fine, and if, just let me know or, you know.
Ralph? There's already a merger committee? If you appoint two or three members from your company, I'm sure the, the three companies, they have a chairperson. I don't go to, I don't go to their meetings. I went to the last one because I was asked about questions, but I think it's Tommy Caro is the secretary.
Are they willing to include this?
They want to include, they, after this meeting, it's in their...
They said they couldn't...
After this, can I, can I finish? After this meeting, in their minutes, it had to contact Station 53 to send two members as an executive committee, whoever you want, to sit down and talk. That's, so, and then that'll, those, those minutes and that information will be in the fire board report.
Just let me make a suggestion to all, to four or five companies. If anybody's unhappy with the way this process is taking place, we are here once or twice every month. Just come to a meeting, voice your opinion and say, look, I could talk about this publicly, or do you have a minute? I want to talk to a couple of members of council and executive session about what's going on, and we'll just, just, we'll deal with it. We're not going to, this is a very serious matter, and we need to get this resolved. So if you feel like you're being treated unfair on any side, we're here every, the first and second Monday of every month. Okay, thank you. We're going to take a recess.
This will be a quick one.
Are we on or not?
Go ask Matt if we're back on.
Ask Ben if we're on. Matt, if we're back on.
Okay, start with the fire chief. What do you have, Herbie?
Busy week, but we'll refrain until next Monday, we'll give you an update on everything.
Anybody in the public have anything they want to speak on any, any items? All right, let's start with Lorraine. What do you have?
I'm wiped out. I just want, we had a great weekend here in Bristol, and with the tree lighting and the parade, and I got to go to everything, and I just want to send my prayers and my, my well wishes to the entire Frank family. I was supposed to go to a wedding over the weekend and something happened to the groom. He was hit by a car, so I would appreciate if everybody could pray for him. And that's it, that's all I have.
Just what we discussed before, I would like to see if we could get on the-
We're voting, so if you want that to be an agenda item, even though we can't enforce it-
Right, but we're still having a meeting next week, right? Or we're not voting at next week's meeting at all?
You can vote next week.
I, I'd rather just wait to figure out exactly how I would like to maybe talk with Mr. Salerno about the way to word it, but-
So have it on the agenda Friday?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all.
Tony?
I'm burnt.
Louis?
I just want to mention about the AOC. Last Saturday, he honored Ron Walker and four of our teachers in the borough, or four in the borough system, and one in St. Mark's, and the student of the year. And it was, it was a beautiful event, as always, and I know the AOC comes up, gives us their presentation on what they're doing, but it was, it was a very nice event, and I think we should continue to support the AOC. And last week, they had the tree lighting on Mill Street, or the 10,000 lights on Mill Street, and that was supported by William Penn Bank, which is now has their corporate headquarters in the Canal Works building. And I think this is really a positive thing for the borough, to have a, you know, have a company who their, their headquarters here, and went to their opening Thursday night, and they said they love the borough, this is the kind of successful small town they wanted to be associated with, because that's where their, that's their type of customer. So again, you know, I want to thank everybody who made that happen.
Mr. Ricchio?
I have nothing, thank you.
Nothing?
I just want to email Mr. Goan later and find out if anyone's looked at the 500 block of Palm Street by the trail to see if the, the lighting is sufficient, because a couple of months ago, I did say that a resident complained that it's really dark back there, and I don't know if we had a chance to check to see if there's sufficient lighting or we should add lighting, but I can email you the address later and you can let me know. And that's it.
Well, you covered all the good, positive things. I don't have much more other, and I want to thank council for, for their vote tonight. I know it's not an easy decision. I hope going forward that council will continue to support the mayor, our fire chief, and the deputy in some of the recommendations. I mean, we, we honored our fire chief for 50 years of service a year ago. Very knowledgeable individual and has the talented heart, as all the firemen do in here tonight, as you, as you heard. They're, they're committed. I just want to make it clear that I support what we're trying to do in the fact of creating, let's call it the Bristol Borough Fire Department, just for lack of a better word. The makeup of that should be worked out amongst the fire companies as best as they can. But at some point, when the state comes back and gives you the DCED assess, assessment recommendations, as it did back in 2005, we as a group, when I say we as a group, the fire board, which is the chiefs of the fire departments in the town, sat down, went through that, and came up and agreed and said, we can do this, we can do this, we can do this. I'm not saying that we shouldn't have anybody else involved. I think this other group that's working on looking at mergers and trying to bring that end together, but let's not lose sight of our professionals who set the SOPs, the other operating procedures for the borough. And, and the last part I want to mention is that through the funding allocation, you can or you can't decide who's going to get the money, who's not going to get the money. It, it's not so much that. But by ordinance, just as in ordinance that you create the police department under the borough code, you also do the same thing with the fire companies. The ordinance we currently have in place has been there since 1927. It still addresses the paid firemen and all the different things that are associated with, with the paid firemen. So going forward, in line with what you were talking about, Greg, I think within, we get the information from the DCED, at that time, that's when you're really going to have to, you, council are really going to have to work closely with mayor, the chief, and this other committee that's looking at the recommendations from the DCED, because you're not going to want to do it. I mean, I sat through some of those meetings back in 2005, you know, and it's not something council really thinks about when it comes to, you know, doing some of the things relative to the fire department, like maybe a sprinkler ordinance, which you, you might not want to do, or you might want to do. But the fire department would tell you, a couple of those sprinklers put out a lot more fire than those three fire trucks are coming, a lot quicker, you know? So I just want to make everybody aware that that's what this DCED assessment's all about. And it's going to come back to you, and you're going to work hopefully with the fire board and the executive committee to make it happen, because I think they're ready. And I don't think, I know they're ready, because I've seen it before where they weren't ready, and council tried to shoehorn it. I was a councilman back in the eighties. We tried to force it to make it happen, it didn't work. Some other mayors tried to make it work, it, it didn't work. We're all in a position, including council, that I think we all want to make it work at this point, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, just to touch on that real quick, because I think we, I think the message we sent tonight was, and Mr. Crotrochi made the motion, that we're not going to have five companies next year, there may not be four companies next year, but if anything, we're going to make a decision on where this money goes. Some companies may get more, some companies may get less, but there won't be five companies next year. Mr. Goan, what do you have?
Okay, as part of the agenda tonight, there's a request to sell a used police vehicle for $2,900 hours. That was tied on the highest bid received. For next week, we have a zero awarding Mill and Basin Street bid for safety improvements. The, also consider rejection of the Iron Creek Bridge bids. I gave you a copy of the engineer's recommendation on that. The bids came in well over the engineer's estimate, so we would request the council rejects those bids. I also hope to have in your packet for Friday a recommendation on the purchase of a new street sweeper. Council president and I and the public works director are working on this. Hopefully, we'll be in a position to make a recommendation, so we'll have a new sweeper for next year. And I guess that's all I have.
So next week is our normal happy-go-lucky end-of-the-year meeting with Christmas carols and all. So if there's, anybody has anything they'd like to discuss tonight, or things that we're going to be voting on next week, I'd rather discuss them tonight, and let's try to end the year on a positive note. Other thing, you need us to vote on something tonight?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. President, to authorize the sale of the 2010 Ford Crown Victoria Police Interceptor vehicle on a municipal bid and accept highest bid in the amount of $2,900.
Second by Mr. Pezza, questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Chief, does that come with the 24-inch spinners?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the last thing is, in case guys aren't here next week, the new swearing-in of council will be January 6th, which is Monday. We can do that at, you just want to do it at 6:00? You want to do it at 7:00? Let's do it at 7:00. Well, it should only take five minutes.
Oh, January.
Swearing in and reorganization of council. Email, but it is January 6th. I'll just have the manager let you know what time. Do I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Greg. Second by Greg.